Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. It is seven o'clock, the second Tuesday of the month, the date and time set aside for the regular meeting of the Nacousa Common Council. If you would take a roll call, please.
Brian?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Come.
Yes.
Earring?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Breda?
Here.
I'm here. Coon?
Here.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve the previous common council minutes.
Go.
Second. Motion second to approve the previous common council minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Entertain a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Go.
Second. Motion second to approve the treasurer's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Next on the agenda is citizens forum. We have some citizens in the audience.
Yep.
Hi. My name is Scott Guston. I live on 122 Ferry Lane. If you guys don't know who I am, I live with my dad. The reason I'm here today is to talk about my neighbors. If you ever walk by it or it's junk all over the place, he said, and he did clean some of it up, but it's far from it. My dad and I went for a ride yesterday morning through Port Edwards. You don't see any of this junk in anybody's yard. It's just, it's just junk, junk, junk. We, a couple of years ago, we had to put up a fence. My sis, this is my sister Sue. We had to put up a fence because it was so bad that we couldn't even sit in our backyard and look over there because there was just junk all over the backyard, all over the front yard. One big thing is, he worked on vehicles. He's had a vehicle, a red vehicle there, a car that he had jacked up for over four months, back tires off, just standing there with a jack. Changes oil, lets oil go wherever he wants. He doesn't, doesn't collect the oil or anything. If you guys, I'm not saying you don't believe me, but if you want to go out on my property, look over the fence, the four-foot fence, you can see oil all over the place. It's just, it's out of, it's out of control. Like I say, we went through Port Edwards. I don't know if they got different ordinances than what we do, but they don't have any of this stuff. I, we seen one, one house that was eh, but nothing else. And I didn't go around our town looking to see. I'm just concentrating on my neighbor. We've had two new people move into the houses. One, one lady moved, or one guy moved into Dorothy Ross's old house. He even said, and I don't know if he said it to you, Dan, but he said it to me because I know you introduced yourself to him, which I thank you for. But he says, I can't believe this town allows that stuff next to your house. And the people across that live in Doug Colka's house that moved into there, they said the same thing. They can't believe how much junk it is. The neighbors to the west of me, last year actually thanked us for putting the fence up so they don't have to look at the crap and stuff. It's just, it's out of hand. I don't know what, I don't know what our ordinances are, if we can do something about it, if we can't do anything about it. The fence that we put up is, we did the four-foot fence like it's supposed to be. Went and did the six-foot fence from the house back. If we can get a six-foot fence all the way up to where I have it, I would, I'd be more than happy. That way I don't have to see anything. If anybody ever sees me driving, I always come from the west into my, my house. That way I don't have to see their house. And I see a lot of other people do that. I don't know what we can do about it, but that's why I'm here tonight. It is, it's disgusting. If you're looking, I mean, you can, all you let you guys walk in backyard, go to the end of the fence and look into, see what they look like and stuff. You got Dennis over there, he can vouch for us. I mean, Dennis and I have been talking. I don't know the people on Elmwood. I just know the lady that's right behind us. She's afraid of the guy. I don't know why. I can't say. I'm not going to say because I don't know. But if we can't do anything, I would like to have a six-foot variance on that fence so that we don't, I don't have to look at it. My sister purchased the other day, it was a, a mesh thing. Some of the boards on our fence shrunk so we can kind of see through there. So we put this mesh thing up so we can't see through it. We shouldn't have to do that. We shouldn't even have to put up a fence, but we had to. So. And then one other, well, yeah, one other thing is, people on, well, probably in the whole town, but people on our street fly down the road. Can we get that radar detector put on the street so maybe they can see what their speed limits are or what their speed is?
It's on Bueller right now. And that was what I was going to ask him to do that.
Especially, well, especially after the baseball games. I mean, we had two ladies yesterday, and I'm not picking on any, anybody, and I don't even know who they were, but I swear they're doing it 45 miles an hour down that road. So it's just, I mean, we got neighbor guys that I'm complaining about, got two little kids, greatest little kids in the world. They always say hi. They'll peek around the fence and say, hi, Don. That's my dad's Don. And, you know, they're very nice. I don't want to see them go out in the road and get hit by somebody for people flying down that road. I know everybody flies down all the side streets, but let's start doing something, you know?
Say, Scott, I was just going to say, you have the right to put up a six-foot fence in your backyard.
In the backyard is what we did, yeah.
Right.
But I have the four-foot fence.
In the front yard, you're talking?
In the front. And I would like the variance to put up a six-foot so I don't have to see this at all. Or, well, I don't know. I don't, I'm not saying the easiest way, but let's get this place cleaned up. You know, if we can't get it cleaned up, let's get it, let me, let me have my fence there. So we don't have, my dad likes to say, he's 88 years old. He doesn't have that much time left. He doesn't need to sit and look at that crap. So if I can get, I don't want to put up a fence because like the two or the three or four of us talked about the wood butt price. It's going to probably cost me another $200, $300 to put that 16 feet of fence up. I don't want to do that. But I don't want to look at the neighbors anymore.
Well, we could probably just look in and where Officer Cole is with, with them. He's the nuisance officer. He does.
Yeah, well.
Go around the city. He may be in the process with them right now.
They have, they have two cars in the back that don't even have license plates on them.
Right.
They got, they got rid of one of them, but the other one is still there as of coming orders of speeding. And that's been there for almost six months or more. What's, what is the address?
120.
120, what is it?
120, I think.
I think it would be 120. We're 122.
Just 122 Ferry Lane.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other thing that concerns me is if he's dumping waste oil.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, he's dumping it back there or? You can, you can stand, you can stand right along the fence on my property and look over the four-foot fence and see the ground is just soaked with.
Oil.
With oil. And you, and underneath his truck that, that don't, doesn't run, it's licensed, but it doesn't run because he's got the cab all filled up with junk. He's got a piece of carpeting underneath there that's soaked with oil too. I mean, any one of you guys can come on our property. I have no problem with it if you want to look. I'm just saying, you know, don't believe me, look at it.
Why don't we go talk to the hall a little bit?
Okay.
Get some more details from them.
Well, she has some more. Dennis, it.
Before Scott moved in there, this has been an ongoing thing with this neighbor. He's been, the police had been there before, took pictures, done everything. It seems like he calms down and brews back up again. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
He gets rid of the cars, cleans up, and then it escalates again. I have a fence there. Duh. Keep my firewood hidden or from getting stolen, but he does pile garbage along my lot line there too. I don't care because it's in his property. But what Scott's saying, it's been a continuous thing because I've seen the police department come from my neighbor's backyard and take pictures of it. So what I'm saying is what Scott asked me to come here tonight on behalf of him, yes, I see it too. There's garbage blowing out of his yard, going through to the other neighbors, and that's what they're complaining about. And I thought some of the neighbors would have been here tonight. They didn't show up, I see. So, hey, I'm just, what Scott's saying, yeah, I see it too.
That could be, could that be a DNR issue?
That could be.
The waste oil and the drawn oil?
Well, I've talked to, I guess.
They won't be so nice.
I have a buddy that works with the DNR, and I'm not going to say his name because I don't, we're not going to get involved in that. But he says, if I got to come over to take a soil test, it's going to cost somebody a lot of money.
Michael Abson.
Right. So, and I don't want to go that route. He was over at the house one day and we were just kind of, we weren't laughing about it. We were talking about it. And he says, if, if you can't get any results, he says, I can send my guys over to get a soil test. We, I don't want to do that. I just want something.
No, it's a continuous thing.
But like I say, if you guys want, anybody wanted to come over anytime of the day, just walk along the fence, look over the fence. Don't go on his property because he's going to have a holy crap fit. But stay on my property and look it over. You'll see, you'll see it. I mean, I have nothing, there's no hiding it. It's there. So. But if you want to talk about the offer a bit, we're going to get some details from them. Thanks for listening to me.
Oh, no problem.
Thank you.
All right then, moving on to committee reports. First committee report is Ways and Means, Chairman Downing.
Ways and Means Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, May 11, 2021, 6:30 in the council chambers at the City Hall. Members present were myself, Brian Krupsek, Secretary Adam Behring, and Garrett Coon. Also in attendance were Larry Krupsek, Mike Com, Randy Soika, Dennis Svensky, and Rick Schmidt from the DPW. Item number one, audit bill list. Item number two, recommend approving special event permit application for the eighth annual Party Animal Cycle Bike Show on July 17. Item number three, recommend rescinding the electrical upgrade payback agreement with the Pumpkin Fest Committee. And number four, donation seminars, computers, equipments in need. Recommend number two and number three.
Second.
You want as well, don't worry. I mark one, or?
Which one, three?
Oh, one, yeah.
Oh, one, two, and three. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Motion second to adopt items one, two, and three of the Ways and Means Committee meeting. You'll be able to roll bubble, please.
Brian?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Earring?
Yes.
Come?
Yes.
Breda?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Coon?
Yes.
Okay, next committee report is Public Works. Chairman Krupsek.
Public Works has one meeting to report on. I move that minutes accepted as written.
Second. Motion second to adopt the minutes of the Public Works Committee meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
To the Honorable Mayor, members of the Nacousa Common Council, Public Works Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, May 4, 2021, at 5:00 PM, and in the Nacousa Council Chambers. Members present were Larry Krupsek, Curtis Breda, Brian Hamilton, and Adam Behring. Also in attendance were Mayor Dan Carlson, Dan Downing, Garrett Coon, Brian Krupsek, Rick Schmidt from the DPW, Michael Com, Chief Police Sean Woods, Joseph M. Rush II, City Clerk, Bill Caverly Jr., Derek Freeman, Jeff McDonald, Sean Murray, and Ryan Arshes. Item one, discuss garbage refuse truck options. Item two, recommend a repave of 10th Street at a cost of approximately $15,000. Item three, recommend a repair of road patches on Peckham Road, Point Bass, and 1st Street at a cost of approximately $5,000. Item four, recommend installation of GSB seal coat on Point Bass by Wood Colony at a cost of approximately $10,000. Item five, recommend taking a one-year savings from bringing in crack fillers, savings of approximately $10,000. Item six, discuss water utility with the Wisconsin DNR Sanitary Survey and Home Maintenance Institute. Item seven, discuss accepting retirement of Hunter Schrader from Public Works Department. Item eight, discuss Wood Avenue Water and Sewer Project Update. Item nine, discuss summer help and refer to personnel committee. There's no questions. I move to adopt items two, three, four, five, seven, five and seven.
Seven. Motion second to adopt items two, three, four, five, and seven of the Public Works meeting minutes. If you have a roll bubble, please.
Larry?
Yes.
Earring?
Yes.
Come?
Yes.
Breda?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
I hope yes. Coon?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Next committee, Public Safety. Chairman Barrett?
Public Safety, one meeting to report on. I make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Say.
Motion second to adopt the minutes of the Public Safety Committee meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
The Honorable Mayor, members of the Nacousa Common Council, Public Safety Committee meeting was held May 4, 2021, 4:30 in the Nacousa Council Chambers. Members present were Curtis Breda, Larry Krupsek, Mike Com, and Brad Hamilton. Also in attendance were Garrett Coon, Police Chief Sean Woods, Adam Behring, Rick Schmidt of the DPW, Ambulance Chief Joe Kirschmeyer, Brian Krupsek, John Marceau, Joe Kaiser, Fire Chief Mike Art Chee, Beth Cox, Stephanie M. Loby, Jason Loby, and Mayor Dan Carlson. Item one, recommend accepting the retirements of Ken Woody and Jim Rowe from the Fire Department. Item two, recommend accepting resignation of Jamie Hoffman from the Ambulance Department. Item three, discuss ambulance consultant's feedback. Item four, discuss ambulance staff. Five, recommend signing the coverage agreement with Wisconsin Rapids Fire and Ambulance. Item six, recommend Officer attend K-9 Angels Training Conference October 3 through the 6, 2021, in the Wisconsin Dallas contract. And item seven, recommend K-9 Officer attend training seminar and certification, May 14 through May 16, 2021, in Hager Ridge per the contract. Let me come motion that we adopt items one, two, five, six, and seven.
Second.
Motion second to adopt items one, two, five, six, and seven. Another Public Safety Committee report. Roll bubble, please.
Earring?
Yes.
Come?
Yes.
Breda?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Coon?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Next committee report, Property Recreation and Human Affairs. Chairman Krupsek.
Property Recreation and Human Affairs has one meeting to present. I make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Second. Motion second to adopt the minutes of the Property Recreation and Human Affairs meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
The Honorable Mayor, members of the Nacousa Common Council, a Property Recreation and Human Affairs Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, May 4, 2021, at 6:15 PM in the Nacousa Council Chambers. Members present were Brian Krupsek, Dan Downing, Garrett Coon, and Michael Com. Also in attendance were Mayor Dan Carlson, Curtis Breda, Larry Krupsek, Adam Behring, Rick Schmidt of the DPW, Police Chief Sean Woods, Ambulance Chief Joe Kirschmeyer, Terry Fancher, and a detach list. Number one, we discussed Pumpkin Fest. Two, discussed SC Swiderski presentation on the developmental plan for the Peckham 40-acre property. Three, discussed fence ordinance. Four, discussed 350 Peckham Road property and building. Five, discussed Riverside Park and the goose population. Six, discussed golf cart use on city streets. And seven was training, training equipment seminars. No action necessary.
We have the next committee report, Personnel. Chairman Hamilton.
Personnel Committee had one meeting this month on May 10.
Aye.
To adopt the minutes as presented.
Second. Motion second to adopt the minutes of the Personnel Committee meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
To the Honorable Mayor, members of the Nacousa Common Council, Personnel Committee meeting was held on May 10, 2021, at 5:00 PM in the Council Chambers. Members present were Brad Hamilton, Larry Krupsek, Adam Behring, and Dan Downing. Also on the fence were Garrett Coon, Brian Mahon, Joe Kirschmeyer, and Ambulance Chief Rick Schmidt, DPW, and Brian Krupsek, excuse me, Ken Woody. Item one, recommend hiring Dustin Pavlik, Katie Caverly, Daniel Harnish, and Hunter Mudrow for the summer helpful employment at the DPW. Item two, recommend going to the municipal, going by municipal code 1.0.3.8 for selection Assistant Ambulance Chief. Item three, discuss full-time replacement for city street department employment, city street department employment. Any questions? Motion to adopt items one and two.
Second.
Motion second to adopt items one and two of the Personnel Committee meeting minutes. Roll bubble, please.
Come?
Yes.
Breda?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
I hope yes. Coon?
Yes.
Krupsek?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Earring?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is a budget resolution.
In our packet recently.
It's a transfer of $265,388.13 from account.
From the general fund.
Yeah, the general fund to the.
Water debt.
To water debt. So. Anybody have any questions on that? Is there a data motion?
Go.
Motion second to adopt the resolution. If you have a roll bubble, please.
From the general fund.
Yeah, the general fund to the.
Water debt.
To water debt. So. Anybody have any questions on that? Is there a data motion?
Go.
Motion second to adopt the resolution. If you have a roll bubble, please.
Breda?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
I hope yes. Coon?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Earring?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is Wood Avenue Utility Funding and Loan Update. Rick, I see we've got Mary on Zoom.
We have Mary and John Proutman's on there as well. Mary, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right. John, are you there? I didn't, I didn't see, I see a little name plaque. There you go.
Yep, I'm here.
All right, good deal.
So I.
Go ahead.
I was going to just do an opening. I sent out a variety of emails. There's, there's a lot there, but as everyone's aware, we've been working quite some time over the past year on this Wood Avenue project. And I'm going to let Mary explain some of the more details here, but all the submittals were made. You know, the DNR gave us certain approvals with these submittals. And just recently, they started really taking a close look at the project when they decided that a large chunk of storm sewer wasn't going to qualify for funding. And so this just occurred, occurred just within the last couple weeks. And kind of set some panic stages going on at my end and try to figure, okay, okay, now where are we going to go with this one? Nick's here and had some discussions with Nick a little bit on the legal side. But I think at this time, I'm going to let Mary kind of do a little overview of where we're at. And John's been brought up to speed our accounting to at least to help take a look at some of the budget side of things. And I also met with Rob Ziegler today to go over funding options with him. He provided some good information too from the bank. So Mary, I'll let you do a little overview of the memorandum that Mary put together, which I think kind of puts together a synopsis of what's, what's occurred in the past and where we're at today.
And believe it or not, this isn't everything. So it's pretty lengthy synopsis, but thank you for your time. Just a brief overview, the Clean Water Fund program is for the sewers. Safe Drinking Water is for the water side of things. Those terms get easily changed. So I thought I'd go through the kind of highlighting, you know, bringing you here to help. But as we've reported previously, we've been awarded a principal forgiveness on the clean and safe programs through the DNR. The safe drinking water side has gotten a maximum grant of $500,000. And the sewer side, it could max at 750, but with the way we had it split and the costs involved, it was coming up to about $611,000 for principal forgiveness, which reduces the loan for both of those by quite a bit. And this progress, this project has been in progress for quite a while. The point of talking about the pre-applications was to say that the DNR looks over the pre-applications and awards points and determines eligibility with the October submittals that are done. And they have looked at this project in 2018, 2019, and 2020. And they were consistent with their scoring for the Clean Water Fund. And so where we're at today is, is a bit of a surprise. Project C was not a part of the original submittals, but we had an email correspondence with the DNR where they approved an adding Project C to the Wood Avenue project. Applications for the funds were in last fall, last summer and last fall. And those applications include a full plan set and specifications with showing all the piping that's already there, the stormwater pipes and pertinences. We show the split that we're looking at. And so they have that information in-house for safe drinking water in June, and they have it in-house in October for the Clean Water Fund. So the project bid, March 22, and we submitted the split to just to get to safety because between water and sewer for the funding, because we felt that water might have been a little more expensive, the sewer was a little deeper, you know, so that the construction costs would pretty well balance out. And based on the location of the pipes, we felt that it would pretty well take out the entire road. There was almost nothing that could be considered undisturbed when you were doing the water and sewer and putting them in. So that's where we are today in that. The construction management engineer for this project, Charlie Cameron, who looked at the split and did not realize that the stormwater was already existing and presented it to his construction management group in that fashion. And he came back saying, well, of course, the stormwater's not eligible. We don't put in new stormwater. We felt that once we understood the project, you would realize it was eligible and something that, that they have covered in the past. And a number of other things happened. Other people got involved at the DNR. And they've been speaking of new policy and we're not going to fund these storm sewers and different things. So that's the curse of the issue that brings us to today. We're, we're still in discussion with the DNR. The, the DNR has sent a letter, which I believe that you got, saying that they were going to basically decide that around $450,000 or so of this storm sewer is simply ineligible. That we feel is part of the, just the construction, sort of collateral damage that happens when you're putting, you're digging down to put the sewer and the water in and then cutting across to put the services and laterals in, and also the hydrants and all the things that go with it. So like I said in the memo, you know, we believe that once they understood the project better, you're going, oh, I'm sorry, you know, it's definitely eligible. But and also, you know, not just from the restoration aspect, but also from the aspect that this is, this is Highway 173. It's, it's has to follow the DOT rules with what you do with it. And the DOT standards must be met to do anything in this corridor. And they have a federal design manual or FDM that they have to go by if you are replacing the storm sewer. You have to size it to certain standards. It has. the storm sewer. You have to size it to certain standards. It has to have certain slopes. All of those things. If you're just doing little patches, it's you can kind of go with sort of grandfathered in with the size, but if you are replacing, and in this case, you will feel that the pipe is fragile, it's in the way of the water and the sewer. It's, it's at a higher elevation, so the excavation, you know, we don't want the guys working out there with, you know, pumping storm sewer, hang on. Possibly, you know, unguazited, so all those taken together, we just really know that the DNR should see it differently, but they're not seeing it differently. We do have to close on the safe drinking water loan very soon or the principal forgiveness will go away and you'll have to refly and compute for it again. We do not want that to happen. The Clean Water Fund, the sewer side can close later, once this storm sewer issue is resolved. Nick Abs has been notified, brought up to speed, and also John Keltner doesn't possibly find anything needs. The DNR has sent basically their version of what they thinks the financing should be. And this is very hard to see. I'm sorry for that. But the, I guess the point is on, on the left side of the screen is where we think we should be at. And the right side of the screen is where the DNR thinks that the project should be. So they're declaring a number of things ineligible for their own and because of the way the code reads, because of the different things, because of other projects using the same kind of parameters, not having these problems. I think there are two paths that can be pursued, maybe more. One is to, I mean, obviously we have to close on the safe drinking water loan. We don't want to always have the million dollars in principal forgiveness. But in the meantime, if the council, you know, is is amenable to it, there's a certain amount of appealing or fighting for the Kusa that can go on here to try to, to get the line shaped with the DNR. Otherwise, the other option is to say whatever you say, but then just say, okay, fine, this is how they're gonna be about this. We just have to find a different financing for the annual storm sewer. The impact on the residents for this, it basically shifts the load from one place to another. It doesn't change the load that much. It just changes how it gets through forward. It does result in some loss of principal forgiveness though. So on the left again is where we think we should be at. On the right is where the DNR says. So what we have here is Project A and C, we believe should have mostly been eligible. They basically ruled out Project C, which is that Market Street. They released Market Street, where there's just little patches here and there for not, not much for the sanitary sewer. A little bit for the water lines and the water for the storm sewer, but they aren't necessarily conflicting with each other. It's a relatively small amount, but they had initially approved it a year ago. If we start with the starting totals for the project, we were at, under the old scenario, we were at two hundred and thirteen, nine ninety-six, and then basically two hundred fourteen thousand that was ineligible, basically storm sewer related, that was gonna have to find financing. Under the new scenario, that goes up to about eight forty-six, eight hundred forty-six thousand.
So just.
For the safe drinking?
Yes. Go ahead, Mary. I was just gonna say, so just to kind of recap this a little bit, now that Mary continues. There's two loans, the safe drinking water and the clean water fund. The safe drinking water is the water main. That's all good. You know, and that's the one we need to close on sooner to keep our principal forgiveness. So the safe drinking water is good. There's no issues there. That one, we can proceed and close that loan and, and continue to do the water work that we have.
When does it take to close that?
When does the safe drinking water loan have to be closed? By the end of June or sometime in mid-June?
Yes, it has to, it has to be signed off at your meeting in well, like the second week of June, and the money has to arrive by the fourth Wednesday of June. And the DNR and the bond council and everybody needs time and we're running out of time. So I think we probably just have to say fine with the safe drinking water.
So we're good there. The Clean Water Fund is the one that we're at odds with the DNR. And that one, we don't have to close right now. And that's what we're gonna discuss is, okay, how do we wanna, how do we wanna attack that with the DNR? One of the things that Mary and I and John briefly talked about was we do have to take maybe a bridge loan on the Clean Water Fund. You know, and that's what I talked with Rob Ziegler about before we closed the loan on the Clean Water Fund. You know, so I don't know, Mary, if you can explain that a little bit, how something like that would work?
So if, if, if we decide, you know, if you folks decide to kind of continue the discussion with the DNR and perhaps even bring in Nick Abs as part of the discussion with the DNR on the Clean Water Fund side, that means that loan will not close by the way. That means construction's ongoing and you need a way to pay for the sewer side of the project. And so that's where the interim loan would come in for that piece. And then with the change in the eligibility ineligible, there would be a permanent loan that would be more than three times bigger than the one that we would have taken out otherwise. And that would be a long-term loan for basically the sewers, I mean, the, the storm sewer piece.
So it can get rather confusing, but on the Clean Water side, the total, the total loan package for the Clean Water is how much? I think I remember seeing something about one point one million. Mary, was that where it was at?
Yes, so on the, the old, we had one point four and six hundred and forty-eight thousand of principal forgiveness. On the, the DNR version, they're looking at one point one million with five hundred thousand of principal forgiveness. So the loan ends up being, is a DNR number six hundred and twelve thousand. Under the old scenario, it was seven hundred and ninety-two thousand. So the interest rate right now is a point eight million one percent over twenty years, so we're talking about thirty-three thousand a year versus forty-three thousand a year. And then we're getting a greater comparison here. I think that's annual dollars or monthly dollars here.
So the way this is shaken out, if I jumped in, is the DNR wants to not package that main Clean Water Fund loan with the storm sewer and lessen that loan, which means there's an amount about, what, eight hundred thousand, Mary, you said, in that range?
Yes.
That would be not part of that loan and that we would need to do, you know, if this holds where it's at, we would need to do a a general obligation loan through probably Rob, you know, for that amount. You know, now the other option, go ahead, Mary.
I just said I did a quick mill rate look, you know, between the previous situation and the new situation. So go ahead.
No, so, so Rob is available to do a loan on that front, so that's, that's there. The other option is, and I want Nick to briefly talk, I don't know, is well, how, what other avenues do we have to, you know, petition the DNR? You know, I, I had a conversation with them last Thursday to the gentleman that wrote this, this email to us and I disagreed with his synopsis and I said I'd like him to reconsider. That was a phone call. I don't know if we have another avenue with it. I know Nick, you and I briefly talked about this and you said that there's a possibility that we could hire another attorney that might be able to do some discussions with them, whether that gets us anywhere. I don't know if you have an opinion on this one way or the other.
Well, I don't think I'm telling anybody anything they don't know or say the DNR is easy. And there are a number of things I, I feel like I'm pretty good at and I don't count that unfortunately as one of them. It's pretty much a specialty area in terms of dealing with, dealing with the DNR on, on water and wastewater and these sorts of things on the municipal level. I talked to Buck Sweeney at, at Axley, who for some of you who are aware, Axley is the term that, that our insurance company usually recommends, that they, they like to hire out. Lori Lubinski's doing some work for the, the city right now. Buck Sweeney's the resident expert on this and I've worked with him on some matters with other municipalities in the area. And he knows his stuff. I talked to him briefly. He said that historically the DNR has been amenable to, to being dealt with on these sorts of things, that they, they can usually, they can usually find money somewhere if there's a misunderstanding or, or if circumstances change. It's, it's not a guarantee and it's never easy. And it's gotten less easy with the change in administration for whatever reason. I, I don't know that there's any, anything specific they can point to, it's just that that's the timing and we don't know why. My thought would be that it can't hurt to consult with him on it. Now, like I said, I've already kind of taken the liberty of talking to him initially and getting a, getting him fully up to speed with the figures and kind of the updated history over the last couple of weeks as to how things have gone. And see if he's willing to take a, take a shot at it for us and, and see if he can get some, you know, if he can get some movement in the next month or two. My, my, I would suggest that the city be prepared to act in such a way as to not miss any opportunities in the meantime, and certainly before the next council meeting. We'll know if, if taking any of these other actions that have been recommended or that are suggested by, by Rick and Mary would be, would foreclose any, any possibility of, of getting that, that loan forgiveness that that the DNR, and to be perfectly clear, that the DNR appears to have promised and then then reneged on. I mean, that's, that's really what happened. I mean, there, now there are arguments being made on both sides and the DNR is always sort of in the position of, I guess that old thing about possession being nine tenths of the law and they're, you know, they have possession of, of these, these, these grant funds and being a state agency, you know, they, they control earth streams, so. It's, it's, it's a significant mistake and it makes a big, you know, it makes a big difference for a, a community with the finances of the Kusa just because of the size factor. So my suggestion was, would be that we kind of pursue both avenues and, and let me get as much done with Buck in the meantime to see where, where we can get, where that leaves us. At the end of the day, I don't think you wanna miss the opportunity to get the loan forgiveness that you still have available. But I mean, I mean, look, shovels are in the ground, it's, works, works being done, contractors are paid, I mean, it's there's a lot of stuff that's really too late to turn back on, you know, I don't think. You know, in terms of substantively, whether or not stuff that still, you know, needs to get done is gonna get done. You know, that's, that's not really for me to say legally, but, but I guess I can find out as much as I can in the meantime, and I think that it's a pretty low risk, high potential reward to take, to, to get Buck Sweeney involved and see what he can do in the meantime.
And if, if the council agrees that that's the right course of action, I'd certainly make myself available with Buck or even travel to Madison to help from the technical side of things as well, as well as our consultant would too.
I, I'm thinking that that might be something that, that we may need to do or that may benefit us to do. And again, in my opinion, doing that is low risk, high reward, given the circumstances for, for, that, that we find ourselves in right now. And, and I mean, to be clear, nobody saw this coming. I don't know how we could have. I mean, you know, this, my understanding is that, that all, the, the project proceeded according to what everybody's historical expectations were in dealing with the DNR and their explicit statements to MSA representatives and to Rick. I mean, that there's, I mean, I don't know how we could have seen this coming except by, by assuming that there would be some drastic change.
How long before we have any monetary obligations to meet on the Clean Water side?
Mary, when do you think we'd have to make a, a payment on the Clean Water side to the contractor? Sometime near the end of June?
Yeah, so probably with that first distribution from the DNR, the fourth, fourth Wednesday of June would be when the contractor would be expecting to get paid. And certainly will get paid on the safe drinking water piece of it, but needs to get paid for the ineligible and the sewer side.
And that's what we. Go ahead, Brad. Question?
Yeah. Did DNR sign off on all this shit?
After a fashion. I mean, we've been following their code.
No, I mean, yeah. I mean, somebody down to the DNR, read all this stuff, seen everything that you had, said, okay, we're good. And you gave us a good news, which, thank you, by the way. And then all of a sudden, somebody said, oh, no, we don't do that part.
Um, so I don't have anything in writing except that you, the projects were put on the list as eligible. They have the full plan sets.
So they said yes.
Basically, yes. I, I mean, they would say, well, we didn't put it in writing.
What is wrong? We've got shovels in the ground. We've got shovels in the ground and we're working. It would be different if this started in July.
Right. I mean, there, there might be an opportunity to redesign something or
Yeah, or.
Do something different.
Yeah, and thank God we've got the Kusa bank.
Uh huh.
The DNR got a.
Yep.
Right.
The contractors order the pipes, you know, I mean.
Yeah.
It's in motion.
Right. John's on the screen, our, our accountant, and John, I wanted to mention, I met with Rob Ziegler today. And Rob said he's willing to do a loan, two percent loans. And we can set them up on any amortization schedule we'd like. So he said, have your accountant look at, you know, depending on how this plays out and what type of loan we're looking at.
Yeah.
He said, hey, have John look at an amortization schedule that works for the budget and we can make the loan fit that schedule. So Rob was very accommodating from that standpoint.
No matter how plays out, we, we.
Right. You know, like if we have to do a bridge loan in order on the Clean Water side for six months or nine months to close the other loan out, he said we can back end it to pay it off at that time. You know, we don't have to pay anything upfront. So he said we can work out the details accordingly to what makes sense and what we come up with here. So he was, he was very accommodating.
Let's say the DNR says, yes, you guys can have this. Well, we're gonna have to pay this new lawyer. We're gonna have to pay interest to the.
To a, to a bridge loan.
To a bridge loan. And we're not gonna get any of that back.
We will not.
I don't, I just don't get where the hell the DNR's coming from on this. This is crap.